United States of America, and do you recall that we were standing as one nation, one nation.
I need a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Any?
Yes.
Danny? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to the personnel section of the consent agenda, first I need a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Stacy? Any questions regarding the minutes from November eighth? All in favor? Are there any other question? Oh, okay. You said that question looked in your eyes. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the personnel section of the consent agenda, any motion? Danny?
Second.
Jason? Any questions regarding the personnel section of the consent agenda as well? Okay, the remainder of the consent agenda, there's a few items there, including the Bosse's. Uh, unit cost methodology, judgment reports. Like that, any, any motion please? Kathy?
Second.
Jason? Any questions regarding this? Any? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's very... I know we have a, a few presentations tonight, I don't really have a report, I just want to acknowledge the passing of Ron Sardari. Uh, I don't know if I'm going to be over on, but he's certainly been involved in education for many, many years, I've known him since the seventies. And he passed last week, I believe. And his services are actually going on right now, but we just had a moment of silence around him. Thank you.
Okay, there we go, Mr. Cidic, so we have, first I just want to say, we had a great Thanksgiving break, I think it was a much needed break for our staff and students and administration as well. I know that many of them had great times with their families and had some opportunity to relax and try to get recharged here for this next six weeks leading up to the holiday period. Also wanted to just recognize the board, we didn't really get a chance in, in last month of be able to do that, which is shared, they have a book of John Gordon called The Energy Bus, which we had John Gordon come at the beginning of the year with staff. He's a motivational speaker and very positive oriented and wanted to share the book with the board as well, so. Again, I want to thank the board for all the work that they do for our students here in the district and certainly greatly appreciate it. So, we have, I'll come to this, they can go to this later, next, the Sun East pilot, we talked about, this is a Tyler County IDA pilot. There's a solar farm is what the pilot's about. And as you recall, a few meetings ago, we passed a policy around the forty seven law of New York State. So what happens with pilots if, when they're solar pilots, if you don't adopt this law, don't adopt the law and the policy, you, you basically would gain nothing in terms of revenue of tax based on net solar farm. So by allowing a pilot to come into play, that allows the district and other entities in the community to, to deal with the tax, otherwise you would gain nothing. So, uh, this is really, uh, just a discussion item more or less that, um, you know, they really just are asking us for, um, if we're good with it, if we're not good with it, um, they usually ask us for a letter of support, so. If, uh, if you're comfortable with that, you know, I'll certainly share a letter with them and, and move forward.
I think, uh, we got anyone here from the IDA?
We don't, no.
I think, didn't she present this for us a while though?
She did, this is just a follow-up.
Right, so. Is there anyone that has any concerns about the, the solar pilot? Two locations, right?
Yeah, we actually have three going down right now.
And unmarried?
Unmarried, we just one, you know, the other, the other two, but.
No, this one's natural, I don't know where the other one is going.
That will, I think that will. Okay. So, um, moving forward as well here, um, just informationalize our budget calendar, uh, you've obviously all seen that, any questions regarding the budget calendar? Obviously, we're coming into budget season again here, um, we spent several months looking at budget and talking about budget and, and planning for next year and the years to come, so. Any questions regarding, uh, that calendar, it looks very similar to the same calendar that we've used, uh, for several years now? Any question? Okay, so now to the fun stuff, we have some guests here today, uh, who are going to talk about some different programs, we have one within the school district that we're piloting this year. Uh, the first group is our student wellness, uh, our student success and wellness group, going to talk about what they do in our elementary schools and in our middle schools. We have Becky Bowers who's here with us tonight, uh, Mr. Hollenbeck who is our athletic director, director of physical education, and is really, um, driving force behind our OA Healthy Initiative across the entire district for students and staff. Uh, we have Mr. Beatty who's the principal at Appalachian Elementary School, and Mr. Schofield who's the principal at Wee Elementary School. So I'll turn it over to you, Danny, for your presentation.
Uh, great, thanks, hi, I'm Becky Bowers, I work for Bosse's, uh, I've been running a program through Bosse's for, I'd say twenty years now, uh, we work in a variety of different school districts, actually in the community as well, and different organizations. And our main goal is really to help people in general develop skills around, um, how to work with other people, collaborate, communicate, problem solve, um, anywhere from kindergarten to, to twelfth grade, and like I said, within businesses within the community. Um, our goal here within OMEGO is really to look at students being able to develop the skills to be successful in school, and also those needed for future careers. So if you take a look, um, in pretty much anywhere you look right now, you can go in, um, different journals, newspapers, magazines, and what employers are saying they really want. While they want all the students graduating with some basic knowledge, what they're really looking for is people that can critically think, problem solve, be creative, communicate, take leadership, and be able to collaborate with other people. Pretty much anywhere you can look, um, those main skills are what, um, employers are looking for, so that's our focus, really, how do we help? Uh, I've been working at the elementary level, um, we did start this program here in the district about three years ago at the middle school level. Um, last year during, um, some kind of COVID times, we were able to pilot a program at the elementary school, it worked awesome, so we, um, built on that this year. Um, really what we look at are some basic skills, the foundation is respect, how do we work together, how do we respect each other, what does that even look like? Um, even if maybe we disagree, um, how can we still disagree but do that in a respectful way? Um, so we really like, what does that look like, why is that important, and how do I contribute to that environment that I'm working in? The next one we really focus in is huge, um, communication, uh, pretty much when I work in, in business and, and industry, um, communication or lack of communication is usually the key, you know, where the problems are. So the kids, actually, there's just this last month, um, we're doing an activity where they really identified what are those key elements to have So the kids, actually, there's just this last month, um, we're doing an activity where they really identified what are those key elements to have good communication. So the students were able to identify, being very specific, speaking clearly, having a good tone of voice, listening to each other, um, having that focus, um, good body language, we can send a lot of information without actually saying anything, and being able to ask questions to clarify what's, what's going on. So we do a lot with, um, at the elementary, um, giving them different challenges, different games, so they can practice those skills and kind of find two, um, best ways to communicate with each other. The next thing we'll be focusing on is problem solving. What does that look like? How do we figure out, um, now, pretty much we have those computers in our hands, we have all that information at our fingertips, so how do we use that to solve problems and apply it? So this is, uh, actually a group this last week at, um, AES, and they had a challenge, uh, where they had to figure out how to create a noodle tower with, uh, twelve noodle chunks. They could only ever use one hand and only come in contact with a noodle, one noodle at a time. So we introduced this problem solving model that's pretty easy and basic, but the kids get really good at managing that on their own. So ask them questions, brainstorming ideas, and then choosing that idea and checking over the group if everybody's okay with that and understands that plan, actually executing the plan and then evaluating what worked and what didn't work. It's amazing, as young as, uh, first and second graders, um, can start managing that and doing a quick checking with each other on if they're okay with it. Um, that's really what our focus is, is giving those skills, um, for the students to be able to use. And then we'll be moving on to looking at responsibility and perseverance, um, having that focus, finding a new way, not giving up. That answer might not always be there right away, it's okay to make a mistake, it's okay to try things out, and what does that look like? Um, and then again, looking at making positive, uh, decisions within, within your life. And again, we do that by giving some different games, challenges for them to practice those skills and really be able to feel some of that success. So sometimes the kids that may not be like super successful in math or science, they can really find some success though when, when they work with each other, um, in these different areas.
So Becky, and then I'll kind of leave that to Ryan, Becky was able to pilot this with us, like she said, we did it for about a month last year between the two buildings. We saw the value in it, it was a great opportunity for our kids that were always students and not just with their teachers in the classroom, but our goal this year was trying to incorporate it into our special schedule, uh, within our six day cycle these kids are going through and they get to see Becky and Nick Whiteman who works in our building, Ryan's going to touch on the sixth grade, but, uh, it's a great opportunity to give them something different and learning how to work together, so. This is incorporated right within our special schedule for both elementary buildings.
So yeah, moving into, and as, uh, Mr. Green mentioned, the board also has the book, uh, that they're going to be reading, but we had the, uh, privilege of having John Gordon come, very motivational positive speaker for our whole district, uh, me as well, leading the OA healthy initiative, sitting in on, uh, a monthly coaching meeting with them about creating a positive culture around the schools. Um, and then the transition this year, we have our sixth grade succession, success and leadership classes. Um, and you can see basically what the focus it is, it's one principal at a time, um, so again, we talked at the elementary level about respect, um, and you know, communication and those skills, these same things are now monthly given into a curriculum through the positive leadership class we're doing. And at the end, it's really trying to promote the whole campus, when we say campus, our whole school district, taking on the role of how we can be a positive school, um, for our community, for our kids, and you know, leading in a positive way. Baby, yeah, you can go on right there. Um, so basically, uh, we have our two success, uh, in wellness leadership coach and teachers here that are working with our kids and again, the topics, there's a monthly topic that they're working on, and it's really around now, you know, what are your, your desires? What are your visions? What are your focus? So you can see there's some of the things that, um, are working monthly and these guys are working with the kids, but what are your hobbies? What are your interests? What are your likes? Um, what is a career or an idea that you might want to start thinking about in sixth grade? Some, some of the things that are going to start to lead you towards a pathway, which I'll talk about as well. Uh, but what are some of the things then again that, you know, you need to personally work out or something you want to work on for yourself this year? Um, so they're kind of getting into goal setting, and you can see from here, it is, it's, it's inviting people to join you, having positive energy. It says avoiding the energy vampires or the, the naysayers, um, you know, trying to avoid those people and, and make better decisions. How to create enthusiasm every day, it's a choice for you, so you show up and you're ready to bring some enthusiasm and energy to your day and what you can get out of it. Get people to feel like they belong, so you'll see one of the key connections and I know even within our own district in our mission statement that we've been working towards, it's this love, serve and care mentality. How are we making sure people feel they belong here, we're taking care of their needs, and we're serving all stakeholders, our staff, our community, our students. So it's really important, and we have these conversations with the kids, and then driving with a purpose. At the end of the day, you want to feel like you're driving your own bus, this is what I'm working towards. They're setting goals and they're working towards those, a lot of it monthly is really just based on discussions that these guys are leading and doing a great job, and they've done a lot of different activities um, throughout the year, and so far, very positive, leading towards, and I don't know if Mr. Georgia will want to chime in here at the end, but leading towards, we've also then started the conversations at the upper level, and I know Mr. Daly's also sitting here part of it, around pathways. And getting students to really start to understand where their career might lead, some ideas and things that they want to engage in and start taking it, you know, more of a direct pathway, um, school wise, class wise, getting some internships, so. This really all comes together, going all the way down to the elementary level of exposure and doing these things to now a more focused monthly conversation around your vision and your own goals, to eventually get to a point where you're kind of getting these experiences at the high school and then moving on, you know, hopefully staying local with some of our community, um, but knowing a little bit more of a better direction as to where you want to go when you leave here. So that's kind of the whole piece coming together, um, and if you have any questions for any of us, but. Enjoy the book.
Yeah, I want to thank, I want to thank you guys for, uh, putting this presentation together and certainly, certainly as you had mentioned before, we work with a lot of employers here locally and these are, these are the skills that they're talking to us about all the time, uh, that they're looking for, uh, future employees to have or future students that leave our school district, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, we want to see Georgia who is going to give a presentation tonight on our pre-grade assessment results for ELA and math and science.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Uh, I took the science out because it was, uh, actually from a few years ago, it was pre-COVID and we felt that that was, um, kind of autopsy data that's way in the past. But we wanted to go through the ELA math specifically. I think what you will see is last year, even though we had the pandemic, we had our students in, we did, our teachers did a great job with the kids when they came in. Uh, when they were on hybrid, they did a great job, and when they were remote, they did a great job. I think what you'll see in our data, the state, it was half the tests, not the whole test. Uh, so the kids took half the test and they could opt out if they wanted to. So there's a caveat that it's not a full set of testing data.
Will we, I mean, just stop it for one second.
Yep.
Try to fill those lights in front of the screen so I can work on. There you go. Thank you.
All right, so they did take the half the test, all the students took the same half the test. It was a very large sample size of students throughout the whole region, and so we do think there is validity in a regional comparison, and that's what we wanted to show you how our kids did, uh, math and ELA, which are two of our most important areas. Uh, this one is kind of uttered, what you'll see, this is called the performance data, uh, and it shows the ones, twos, threes and fours. As we go down through, we're going to show you the threes and fours, the kids who passed and, uh, what percentage in each of the grade levels. Uh, so can we move to the next one? Thank you. So, if we look at the regional comparison three through eight, and we take all of the tests and kind of combine them together, in ELA, I'm going to go down through all the ELA grades, then we'll trans, transition into the math. Uh, regionally, we were ranked number two in ELA overall, it's a composite, uh, pretty solid. Thank you. Uh, so now we're going to take you down through each of the grade levels, so we are ranked number one, uh, in grade three proficiency, and again, this is just the threes and the fours. Uh, but more kids that you get passing, the ones and twos get lower proportionally, it's just easier to do a comparison across the region without having all of those different bars, and I think you can see that. Um, so number, in the fourth grade ELA, we were tied for third regionally ranked. Grade five, we were first regionally ranked in ELA. Grade six, again, first regionally ranked significantly above. So in grade seven, this is an area where we have some work to do, we were tenth, uh, in the region. And in eighth grade, we were regionally ranked number five. So in our middle school, we got, uh, some work to do in the ELA area, and we knew that already and we've been, uh, working and addressing that. So if we look at the regional comparison, uh, for the math performance, uh, we were number one in the region overall in three through eight, uh, if you take all of the tests combined together. With a fifty-four percent regional ranking, uh, for proficiency. So math grade three ranked number one. Math grade four regionally ranked number one. Math grade five ranked number one. Math grade six ranked number one. Seventh grade again, regionally ranked number eleven. And math eight, uh, we had all our students that were in the advanced program, take the advanced, uh, algebra one. And typically, we have them also take the second exam, we did have them do that this year, but moving forward, we will. If we had them, we would be even higher in the ranking, uh, but we had so many number ones in the different grade levels, we're still overall ranked number one. So I think what you can see is, we're doing really well, uh, even though we had the difficulties that we had. Our PLC system, our ability to transition into digital media, because we've been one to one for so many years, uh, and our teacher teams working together last year, we still feel like, and we've been saying this, we don't feel that we had a huge get, learning gap like some other districts did because of those things. And I think what you're seeing here in our, in our data, especially the aggregate data, is that we are still, uh, our kids did really well on those tests, uh, compared to other schools in the region, so we, I think we will really solid. And that's it, quick, can we see, uh, any questions?
Did you said, uh, you knew we had the problem with the grade seven, right?
Yep, we were working on that.
That's been passing through that same, um, group, right? It's been kind of passing through it.
Yeah. We, we, we've also, uh, you know, seventh and eighth grades, we've had a drop off there, and, uh, so we've been tight, we've been really moving towards standard based grading. Uh, we really tightened our PLC teams up there, and, uh, we've had some shift and movement in personnel, and I think those three things, hopefully we will see an improvement, uh, as far as the regional comparisons concerned.
You want to say any questions for you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, great news really, um, we're nice to have you, uh, to be number one, uh, regionally in math and number two in ELA. And we're considering to show great progress and growth, we know we got a couple of areas that we're still, we're working on and, uh, trying to grow in those areas, which we certainly will. Uh, but we're very pleased and our staff should be very, um, excited and we should appreciate the work that they've done, and our students did a great job as well, so, thank you. Uh, next item, just, we've been working on this, uh, here in the school district since, uh, this, early this September. I've been working on a blueprint for excellence, and this is just an overview and some of the highlights. At our next board meeting, we're going to give more of a, uh, more of a presentation with more detail. This is just kind of where we're at in the draft process, so if you go back to September where, uh, the board and the leadership were able to meet with our facilitator, Mr. McGowan, uh, where we started to put together these ideas around making some updates for our mission, vision and our core values as a school district. Um, around October, we put out some community feedback, uh, we received a great deal of feedback, the thought exchange, we used that feedback uh, in a November meeting that included several different stakeholders, uh, from the community, from parents to, um, community members, from our support staff, from the teaching staff, our administration, to our board members. It was a great night where we had, I think, roughly about sixty, uh, people attend and were able to collaborate, work together, um, taking the feedback that we received from the community and then putting it into next, next steps or action plans, um, for moving forward. So, later in November here, uh, we took that work as a leadership team that came out of that stakeholder group, which has kind of put us to this point where we are today, and this is, this is just a draft, and I know the board, you have, you've seen this, um, and you have this in front of you, so certainly feedback from you over the next couple of weeks would be greatly appreciated if you see anything that, uh, we might want to take a close look at. Uh, some of the, some of the themes, if I can see these, a lot of the themes were, uh, engaging and challenging learning for all, culture of collaboration, human capital, and then mental health and student support. So those were areas that came out of the feedback from, from all the stakeholders. You can see, and I won't read it to you here, but you can see the mission and the vision, again, this is just a draft and what the core values were, we were currently at. So, um, our plan and goal is to bring some stakeholders from that group to our next meeting to do a nice presentation and uh, hopefully at that point, we'll be ready for the board to adopt, uh, our new mission, vision and core values. And from that point, um, you know, myself and, uh, a few others will go around to the different buildings throughout the district and, um, some of the places that we go in the community as well, we're just talking about these updated changes and, and the work we're doing in the school district. Uh, we felt this was really important work to take on, especially right now considering how things have gone the last few years. Uh, we've, we've faced some challenges and, uh, we thought this was a great time to really take a look at ourselves and look at our mission and vision and, and what we're truly here to do, uh, for kids in our school community. Any questions? About that? If you have feedback, certainly, probably. We'll wait for the next acting minister comes up. Okay, so early in the year, um, opening day of staff, some of the boards were there, but I, I shared these, uh, goals, uh, for myself this year in terms of, of the focus areas for me and what, uh, I'm driving towards for this school district. So, as you can see, uh, you know, as I just mentioned, revisit, update our mission, vision, uh, core values and goals. Uh, focus on a positive organizational culture, there's been some rough times here for staff and for kids and for community and, and families. Really trying to bring that positive culture back, uh, to everybody. Uh, getting back to our roots, our professional learning community roots, our meeting norms and practices, we're, we're really focusing on learning, we're focused on collaboration and we're focused on results. And I think you can see that our system and our process, based on the presentation that Mr. Georgia gave, um, that we're doing very well when it comes to student achievement results. Uh, the fourth thing is, what we've done over time here is we've really tried to focus down on essential skills. Um, the curriculum is a mile wide and an inch deep sometimes, but really honing in and focusing on what kids need to know versus what's nice to know. So we've done a lot of work, at one point, we went from ten essential, uh, skills that were shared with you previously, but now we're down to four. So we're really honed in and focused, uh, across the board as an entire district. And then the fifth thing, uh, really is continue to build a comprehensive, flexible and creative twenty-first century model for learning through in-person and remote instruction, uh, in grade seven through top. So we learned a lot over, uh, the last few years in terms of how to implement remote instruction and to really move in this flexi, flexible innovative way. So we're continuing to work on that and continuing to evolve, um, that twenty-first century model. So in terms of district goals, we did make some updates, so you'll see in green that I, I just showed where we went from ninety to ninety-five percent, so we raised the bar. Uh, we've been significantly above ninety percent now for a few years, and our dropout rate, it used to be, we would say at five percent, now we've, we've lowered that to three percent. Uh, goal number two has stayed the same, as you saw of our pre-grade scores, continue to see good growth there. Uh, but that, that was, that's a stretch goal there, ten percent is a pretty large, large jump when you're talking about, uh, state assessments. Uh, goal three, improve student proficiency, proficiency rates and regions exams, uh, to rank in the top three. That was the top five, and we've consistently been there, uh, in our high school and performing at a very high level, and also, uh, continue to show growth in math degree. Uh, the fourth bullet, again, that was a stretch goal, we originally, originally put these goals together, uh, having eighty-five percent of our students read the paper above the grade level and twenty percent annual growth and writing benchmarks in pre-K through eight. And then the fifth goal really, what, you know, a, a huge focus for us has been, uh, to increase the participation rate for our, for our students in our school community programs. Uh, that did say grades three through twelve initially, but now we've moved it to pre-K through twelve, and we bumped the number from eighty-five to And we bumped the number from eighty-five to ninety percent. I think a nice example of this is the recent partnership that we've had with Boys and Girls Club. Different partnerships that we have with local businesses for students to do internships in the high school. So there's a lot of opportunity for kids to maybe try to find their niche and their connection to the community. So it's an important goal for us. Any questions? So we're raising the bar, we think it's time to elevate a little bit. We've been here and we'll, you know, we're going to continue to focus and maybe better. So, and yeah, in this area here, we have Mr. Daley and Mr. Georgia. Just with a couple of the new programs that we received approval on. As you're all aware, we've added some career technical ed programs. We have our Philly trades program that have the equipment. We have animal science for students and a communications pathway as well. So we're going to talk about that just for a second. I think on, on the process, it's a lot of work, Mike's done a ton of work in this area and certainly we greatly appreciate that.
So this is our fine arts request I'm talking about. The state changed two years ago, I believe, from where it was a long application process to allowing fine arts to be locally approved. So that's what we're doing here, just presenting some of these courses. I'm not going to read that whole long thing to you. But basically, it says, what I just said, that we're allowed to do this at a local level. And they're going to relook at that. But I believe, we believe that this probably, this is going to be a process from now on. So the courses that we are asking for approval are music production, video production, graphic arts, and floral design and horticulture. Go together with our acting department. There's a curriculum and blueprint that each of the teachers worked on this summer for all four or five courses. And then you guys have a copy of those that the teachers did. The teachers that worked on it and they all, I give them all credit, a lot of credit to thank them for coming in over the summer, spending the summer time to do this. So we were prepared for the school year. We're Mr. White, Mr. McAvoy, Ms. Forrest, and Mr. Service. And they did his time to prepare those blueprints to be ready for the kids this year and do those stuff.
As Corey said, it's really been initiative of Mike's that before it was all controlled at the state level. What classes, in the fine arts specifically, that could be taught or not taught. He identified that we had an opportunity to expand our catalog. And his work with his team members in his department to develop the blueprints and the curriculum that you'll see attached to the board agenda. That's really mostly Mike doing that process. I just want to recognize that and have him to be able to, to hear that from us publicly. But honestly, we wouldn't have had it if he's not here today.
It's been a lot of work.
Yeah.
Well, the teachers did, I mean, the teachers put in a ton of work, they were great. I just had to.
It's well done.
Gordon and I, thank you.
Mike sits there and helps them designing the courses and helps them fit it into our blueprints. And has been taking it and modifying them towards standard space grading. So he's been doing a lot of work, you know, to see what's without.
It's exciting.
He's a driving force.
Well, I just want to thank obviously the board and the administration because, I mean, really as a teacher. And I think these kids, like, it's pretty neat. Because like being a district is like, okay, let's, let's think outside our box, let's not keep doing the same. Because there were, I think, three courses that the state had always just said, these are your three for fine arts. And once they opened it up, I don't know of other districts that are like, alright, let's do this. And that's really good kids, right? The kids now have, oh, I'm going soapbox here. But right, we start talking about pathways and really limiting kids to those three things. Now we're starting to have courses and define our credit for kids who take in ninth grade as a pathway, start to grow. This, this is kind of a first step towards that. So it's, it's fun to be in a district that's thinking that far ahead and doing those things, so thank you.
Right, I need a motion to approve this. Right, any, any questions? On favor, Mike, that's very. Okay, we're a little out of order, so I'm going to back this up to the public comments. I have Alyssa Pope here that would like to address the board tonight and starting now, sorry, board.
Is it okay for me to hand this to Marcy?
Sure.
Is it, okay. These are just articles that I took, so what I'm going to say from them.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Great, just wanted to tell you we're going to try to limit it to two minutes.
Right, I, I understand.
Okay.
I don't think anybody runs for a school board that doesn't want to do something good. There's a lot of troubling trends in our country coming this way. They're across the country. There's a lot of, a lot of very sexually explicit material that's been presented to kids in school districts. It's been in a lot of different states. I think everybody here wants to work together for the good of our kids. And so I guess maybe I'm trying to be a little bit proactive in saying, I want to make sure this doesn't come to Oego. I want to make sure these things don't hit our kids. I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Hey. Danny, if you may, remind you want to talk, you said not sure on here.
No, I guess not.
Okay, I didn't want to be kind of spotless, I sort of did, sorry. Just didn't want to skip over you, if you wanted to say something. Okay, Patty Miller?
Hi.
Hi.
I missed you. Yeah, I want to thank you for opening the meeting again, we appreciate that. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
So some of this ties into what you were talking about earlier a little bit. So I think we're all aware of the expense, of the exposure of the board meetings that they've gotten in the past few months. This is a confirmation to me, as I've been praying about it, as to what action I need to take. So I just heard my spirit to go help the children. So when I hear the Lord speak, I act on it. So I had to do something. So I started coming to the board meetings and speaking for the children, speaking up for the children. So I love God, I love my family, I love our country. I'm here taking a stand for the children. I stand along with many others, even though we don't see a lot here, to fight for the good of the kids and against the wickedness and evil. All that is needed for forces, for forces to evil succeed is enough good people to remain silent. Let me read that again. All that is needed for forces of evil to succeed is enough good people to remain silent. We will not remain silent anymore. And we won't let the government come into our, our education system. We are awake, watching, aware, how our tax dollars are being used, God help us. We do not support the social, emotional, anything. And we want to know how any of this really adds to our children's better education. The info from surveys, the questionnaires, et cetera, actually is, is none of your business. And frankly, a waste of taxpayers' money. What's done with the information anyway? I have that, present that question to you, I don't know. I'd like to know what all the information that you've been collecting for a few years, what you do with it. And we do not support hiring of another administrator that keeps track of the accountability, the data. We do not support two new counselors you've added with our tax dollars to try and help with social, emotional needs due to COVID. What you don't understand is we have a spiritual problem cannot be fixed by adding counselors. We do not support any more push to add the diversity, equity, inclusion, or culture, response, sustaining agenda, all those. Keep the indoctrination out of the schools. Can you promise us safety for all our children in the bathrooms, in the locker rooms? Now where do we draw the line? Where do you draw the line? Do you know there's a new sex ed cricket, or bill ready to be passed in New York State? I don't know if you knew about that. We are well aware of what happened in Virginia schools and it's a great concern of ours as taxpayers too, and our parents, and it should be yours too. So we are here standing for what is right and opposed to what our tax dollars are funding. We won't, we won't back down. We will expect transparency and strings attached to our funding. Our kids are not for sale. We will not co-parent with the government. We have God-given rights as parents and our constitution protects those rights from the government. So we ask you to take a stand against government control over our kids. If not, there are people ready to take, take your places. So thank you.
Okay, looks like the last one is Donat theory.
It's a Donnie, not a Don.
Donnie, sorry. Do we have to talk to Don, or that's okay?
This is, this is my first time being to one of these and from what I've seen on the news and, and read and like, this is not at all what I was expecting. No, no fights, no arguments, no yelling. This is nice, this is nice, I might come to another one. So that being said, I do have, I have two questions that I wanted to ask. If they've already been answered in previous meetings, I do apologize. I appreciate your patience for me not doing the research to find the answers to those questions. But my first question is in regards to the state of emergency that the governor has just declared. Does that give her any kind of unilateral rights to usurp any kind of congressional authority and mandate anything like vaccines? Or, you know, the list goes on, right? Of, of, of what they've, of what they decide we can and can't do based on COVID. So I, I just want to know, a preface to that, I, two of my sons attend at, at like an elementary school. And one of them's very high, high risk, he had heart surgery when he was a baby. And so from the statistics provided by Pfizer to the FDA, children have a higher risk of being hospitalized for myocarditis due to side effects from the vaccine than they do from COVID. So if the governor says, hey, you want to go to school, you got to get this vaccine. And I mean, I've seen all kinds of exemptions that have been tossed out the window before. And I, I really, I don't want to put my son at risk. He needs to be in school, he's got special needs and we love the teachers and we love the staff and it's awesome. And he needs to be there, but I don't want to put his safety on the line because a bureaucrat in Albany decides that that's what's best for, for my boys. If that makes sense, so that's my first question. And then I'm blanking on my second question because that was my main one. I was primarily concerned with, so I guess I'll be quiet and if anyone, if anyone answers that or has an idea.
I don't know, I couldn't, I'm not sure what, what the governor's authority is when it comes to that. I really don't know. We'd have to research that a little bit to see. We haven't heard anything.
Okay.
In regards to that. I do know more recently it was the health department, the state health department, that made some, some changes. But I haven't, I have not heard of anything of that major. I don't really even know what the state emergency includes, to be honest with you.
Okay.
The new, the new variant. But I mean, in our experience, I think, you know, given your situation, I could certainly understand your concern. And totally would stand an empty on that one, I don't think it's good to risk.
Right.
I, I think they had issued that, where if there's, if any of the inoculations, where if there's a medical reason that they would be exempted from it, right?
Well, I.
I mean, that's the best. Right, because I'm, I don't know what the new governor is up to.
I mean, I guess, the, the reason I am concerned is because I have a very good friend who is a doctor and was let go from UHS because he had a higher risk of blood clots from the vaccine than he did from COVID, which I understand also causes blood clots. But, but the hospital let one of their primary providers go because he wouldn't get vaccinated because he didn't want to take the risk of having a blood clot that could kill him versus the survivability of COVID. So that, that's my primary concern. And so I, I, I do appreciate you being willing to, to stand, stand with that, that's a big deal.
I appreciate your concern too, obviously. Sadly, we don't really know.
Yeah.
What the governor's authority is. And we could check into this or maybe try that stuff. Why don't we do that then, and ask Mr., or, or, or Peter Ashar if he can help us with that question?
Okay.
Actually, we don't have an answer for you. I, I would hope that they're going to, given those circumstances, that there would be some, you know, some choice.
Yeah.
It would seem reasonable, but this whole thing with COVID is really. It's set the whole, somebody said earlier, the whole country kind of ended here with us, so.
Right, yeah.
But we certainly, we heard you and we, we had a say where you're coming from.
Okay.
And if you think you have a question, feel free to send an email if you want, or come to the next meeting.
It wasn't, it was, I mean, that was, like I said, that was my primary one. And my other one was like, you know, I should if I have more, if my two minutes allow, but, so.
Wow, we appreciate you coming, come again.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
I guess we have one remote note. John, were we able to connect with?
Zoom, Zoom is not cooperating.
I read his, I read his, I don't know, did he want me to read it out loud?
Yeah, he does have his hand raised to say something, so let me see if I can pull him in here.
I don't think any others.
As long as this, as long as this stays connected, you should be able to see on public screen. There you go.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Oh, all right, he's, I think that maybe he declined that, so maybe just, we, maybe he just wants you to read whatever.
I, I read it and the whole board did read it.
Okay.
And numerating up and passing down, nothing that we haven't read before. So I don't know, did he want me to read it to the floor? I want the board to read it. I just, you, and we've all read it. No surprises, I'll let the board look at it and send it back there, I'll read it out loud for Mr. McNamee. He's elected to stay home. Just so he.
Did he ask that this be read, after the end?
I don't know. I, I'll read it just to be curious to Mr. McNamee. For September two thousand nineteen, OACSD newsletter, academic performance and graduation rates have been unacceptably poor prior to two thousand seventeen. I don't know why we put that in there. That newsletter, but anyway, in two thousand sixteen, the BOE changed the district goals from five generally described and diverse goals to five very specific goals, all regarding academic performance. Since the adoption of these specific goals, OACDAS, SDE performance, academic performance, has improved very substantially. Okay, so then he stops there and shifts to his, this is one of Mr. McNamee's constant concerns. OAC, OACSD employee compensation is out of control, as documented by all measures. Why doesn't the BOE adopt the same level of granularity of goals for financial and cost elements of the teacher's contract? We have the highest teacher and staff salaries, energy costs, and best healthcare command in this other tier. So that was Mr. McNamee's statement. And that's it. So, do you, anyone have any comments? Again, as we've seen multiple news, or emails from Mr. McNamee dating back, what? Is he there?
I was wondering if I could make a public comment or not. I, I wasn't planning on it because this is for business conduct after Bernie, so I meant to comment this on this respective Bernie.
Go ahead.
Okay.
If you could come up and say anything, if you could.
My name is Chad Harris, have a couple of kids who come, go to Oego. I actually want to talk about the solar stuff that you mentioned. I have two comments, we'll start with the solar stuff. Is the intention to? Um, is the intention to use that to offset energy costs at this school district? Is that sort of the plan behind that?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
In these solar games, no.
Alright, I was curious. I know some districts locally had. I was just wondering if we'd had any information, how that would work.
We've had one of the facets on that, but just, I don't believe we've.
Okay. Uh, and the other, just if I can, uh, quickly, business connected to current meeting, um, the success and wellness group. I had a conversation, I had no idea you guys were gonna talk about this. I had a conversation last night with my uh, fifth grader, fifth grader. Um, and was trying to get information, what was going on at the school, what's his favorite subject? And uh, after telling him that lunch and recess didn't count, you guys came in third. So, uh, you guys are doing a great job. So keep that up. He was very excited to tell me all about the products he works on every week. So thank you guys. Thank you.
You should come back again too. We could be a little humorous meeting.
I tried.
Recession month, yeah. Well, I'm homeschooling my eight-year-old granddaughter these next couple of days, so I'm giving a full appreciation for how much recess is much more fun than Grandpa teaching her math. Which I don't understand, but I, you know, I'm doing the best I can. Anyway, uh, okay, so we're around the room, right? Just trying, yep, who's here? Mr. Schofield?
Alright. A couple of things coming up. Uh, obviously you premissed on the calendar, parent-teacher conferences are coming up. Uh, we have it offered for families if they want it to be virtual. They've set it up with their teachers to do that, if they can't make it in. But we also have it in-person for families if they wanna come in and meet in-person with their teacher. Um, band and chorus concert, uh, we have one coming up for fourth graders on the eighth at six thirty. Uh, that'll be in our auditorium. Uh, fifth graders will have that concert coming up in January. Uh, our fifth grade student council started a food drive in our building. I know they're doing it in the other buildings as well. Um, but we started that for this month of December and they've been doing a great job getting to all the grade levels and helping out. Uh, and our PTO is doing a great job helping us get our holiday shop up and running again this year, uh, for the holiday season. So things are up and running for the holidays. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Jane. Uh, before Thanksgiving at AES, we had an opportunity to take a deep breath and pause and celebrate our student performance, some of the data you saw tonight. Um, we realized that uh, it's important to stay focused on the process and uh, that good results come as a consequence of doing things right. Uh, I've been working really closely with our leadership team on looking at our quarterly assessment data. We just completed the ten weeks and we're making interventions for those kids who didn't get it or working on the reteaching of, you know, who didn't get it yet. So um, there is, there is a dedication to the process, uh, of teaching and learning and um, we're doing that. The other thing is, uh, we had a, a visit today from uh, a very important person or a important thing at AES, which was Benji the Rabbit in first grade. And uh, Benji's gonna be back with us till Christmas, so uh, that was very interesting.
I worked out that there. You wanna go first, Patty?
Sure. Um, so when we walk through the high school, uh, the hallways at the high school, we hear music. It's so nice. There's kids playing in the hallways. We can hear them outside the band room and the chorus room. So they've already had two concerts. One fall jazz concert in October and then a fall concert weekend, um, one in November. MTV performed at the DFW for a benefit for our local veterans and they'll be the host team already. Um, our OFA saxophone player, Nat and Plute ensembles all performed for the historical legal marketplace holiday showcase on November thirteenth. Um, that was held at Aboriginals this year. Um, some of the upcoming events are lights on the River this Friday, so that's the OFA saxophone quartet in Chambers, yours will be there. Um, OT and Bomb is Saturday, December fourth from twelve to two. The Rotary Club meeting is on December seventh. And then the OA musical booster craft fair this year, um, on December eleventh is at the Oego Nazarene Church on Penn and T. So there's a lot of opportunities to hear our kids play. Um, we're also working on giving, the giving trade for the high school and middle school this year. Um, we have student council and then our faculty and staff to help us with that and to like get cards for some of the kids that are in the, in the home.
Do you think uh, you can get that located up to the board?
I can, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, uh, before we, before we adjourn, I just wanna ask, uh, if uh, Jason, Mike, and Stacy and Danny, we have, I have a document to resume, so I'm afraid to hold. If you would, please. Just your yearly oath of the board. Do this document sign before you. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Jane. All in favor? Thank you everyone.